Okay. All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axon County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, December twelfth. Like to call the meeting to order and welcome Pastor Kelly for indication. Morning.
Good morning. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be alive today. Thank you for touching us this morning. And open our eyes to the day. Now, Father, as you were to bless these citizens of Axon County as they go forth to meet the needs of the people of this great county. Continue to bless and continue to lead them and guide them in their grand demnology. In image used to Christ, I pray. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with energy and justice.
Thank you. Public comments. Seeing none, approval of the minutes. Did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
Yes.
The promotion approved.
Some of. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Reavis.
Boy, um, so last week I went down to the K C rep for our meeting. Joe was already there. Uh, it was a lot of good information. I met a lot of people and learned. I learned a lot, learned a lot of what I don't know. So that's always good. And really learned a lot about road and bridge and equipment, things like that. So it was, it was time well spent. So.
Thanks.
Hey, I want to, uh, thank, uh, the county for Wilburn Christmas Party. Uh, we had a good time. I want to thank the Safety Committee for planning that. And though there's a lot of work done, I'm on the committee, but I don't feel like I could really, uh, done much, but I know there's several members there that have put in a lot of hours on that. And then I'm glad everybody had a chance to participated. And I appreciate those that were at work that couldn't attend, but maybe wanted to. So I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, uh, very, but thank them for the Christmas party. Yeah, I want to echo that real quick. I totally blanked it. It was great. Very nice.
I agree. It was really nice. Thank you. All right, um, new business. We have a letter of support for St. Benedict's Abbey Grant.
Yes, this is a letter for, um, they're applying for a grant, um, to consolidate some services up on the old youth center campus. Um, and it's a combination of some healthcare services, daycare services, head start, several things. So for those who support, I did a personal letter of support and asked them for commission support. No financial obligation, just to support community wide that is available, uh, idea and service.
Will this be a grant that the county will be a conduit for like the last one that we did?
So, but I don't know. That wasn't mentioned at all. I think it's.
Probably be in city, wouldn't it?
Maybe it's just directed there. Yeah, I didn't get that information that way.
Okay.
If I find out a different election, I don't think so.
Okay. And did you draft a letter of support?
Yes, Kaylee's got it there. I was going to refer a kind of letter here. So you would have a chance to read it. Basically just goes through bullet points of each thing they're doing up there and.
Awesome.
Not bad.
Okay. Um, so I will, uh, make a motion to sign the letter of support for St. Benedict's Abbey Grant that they're applying for. Do you have a second?
Can we postpone that till we read it?
You can email the one I've got two years.
I'm. On it now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I mean, just we can revisit that when we get.
Yeah, yeah. I've put a signature line for all three commissions.
Okay, so we'll come back to that then. Um, Mark's list. Okay. So, um, we were given information this morning, uh, by Roger Denton, our D I S director, um. So this year he's proposing to go with Mark, um, for our flyover, um, project where they come in and do photography over the county. And we do this every three years, the last three cycles. Uh, this year approximately the county's expense will be twenty thousand. Um, so we have budgeted in the appraisers budget historically, but then that got moved into a reserve. So we will just have to work with the finance director to figure out where, um, the funds will go. But Roger needs, um, us to approve whether or not we want him to move forward with, with Mark. So.
Um, just one little aside for the viewers, uh, Mark is Mid-America Research Council, so region, mid-region, region council, sorry. But, uh, it wasn't Mark Chetlin. Yeah, it's a multi-county.
I didn't.
Project which creates a big discount for all just being counties. Uh, so this is where you get your aerial photos on G I S map.
Yeah, the six, six inch aerial photography.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. You want me to read this or do you want to just read?
I just. Just read through it.
Okay, so I also have, uh, employee payroll status forms for all department head salaries. Um, so I am going to read them individualized and then call for one motion. Um, if there's any that you have questions about, feel free to speak up. Um. Al- Alan Reavis, Axon County Commissioner, District One. Twenty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Eric Knoll, Axon County Commissioner, District Two, twenty thousand, six hundred six, twenty thousand, six hundred dollars and six cents effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Casey Quinn, Axon County Commissioner, District Three, twenty-four thousand, three sixty-nine, twenty-six, effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Sherry Becker, County Attorney, one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Michelle Phillips, Axon County Clerk, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars and twenty cents effective of twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Connie Ellerman, Treasurer, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Shelley Camp- Campbell, Axon County Register of Deeds, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Sheriff Jack Lori, Axon County Sheriff, ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-four cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Hu- Human Resource Director, Jody Moore, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred ten dollars, six cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Brian Oswald, Axon County Maintenance Director, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and twenty-nine cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Wes Lanter, Emergency Management I T Director, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Patrick Henderson, Axon County Counselor, eighty thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Holly Hacketthorne, Axon County Appraiser, eighty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Joseph Snyder, Roden Bridge Director, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and six dollars and forty-three cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Cory Scott, EMS Director, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Kim Pruitt, Joint Communications Director, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Stacy Waggle, Solid Waste Director, fifty-six thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Lindsey Wood, Senior Village Administrator, ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, effective date twelve thirty-one twenty-three. That is all of our elected officials and department head salaries for twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. I'm. On, for this moment now, I'm getting the jury. Thanks, I'm the last one. Did you sign the last one?
No, it says my left in there.
I signed that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you signed it.
I hope it was still one in there.
You better got, forgot it. Yeah.
Is it a trouble or something? They're in order for you. They're managed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, after time to review the letter of support, I have a motion to, um, approve the letter of support for the, uh, St. Benedict's Abbey for their grant.
So move. So.
And we've been seconding all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Michelle Phillips, County Clerk, Lockwood Election Purchase Order approved.
And she is.
Thank you for the greeting. If you wanted a paper copy of the letter, you should have that. Um, I do have a purchase order here for Lockwood Election in regards to, um, full books that we will be needing, um, full book envelopes, um, provisional ballot envelopes, which provisional ballots for when people are not assured or change of names, change of address, we need those. So we did, um, replenish some of our supplies, but it is over the twenty-five hundred grand total. So I would just like to give that.
And this is just for the March. Is this for the, this is a letter that you sent us the specials?
No, this is going to be, um, a little bit of carryover for, uh, some of the others because we are running short.
Okay, so just overall.
Yes, yes, yes. I shouldn't have another big one like that until twenty-five.
Okay. All right, so I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from the county clerk, um, to Lockwood, Lockwood Election for three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and twelve cents. Have a motion to approve.
Salute. Second.
Okay, so we've been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
You can scan that.
I will.
Open it up.
And then I can deliver it today if you want to scan it.
Absolutely.
Oops, sorry. That format kind of funny as a file.
You guys are going to have an executive session at some point. I'll be out. I'll see.
I have a, um, and then the next three are memberships that the county belongs to. Um, ironic that I got them all at the same time, which is good. Um, so you guys can either yes or no them. However, you, you choose. Um, this one here is the League of Kansas Municipalities. Uh, twenty twenty-four membership dues by population charges, one seventy-seven nineteen, and then the base fee is seven fifty for a total of nine twenty-seven nineteen. And I think we had membership in twenty twenty-two, but I don't know that we've had it before that. So you can.
We came on because Mr. Bauer and Mr. Sartorius were friends and, but we, then we joined being open-minded, but we never really got much out of it.
Yeah, we, we tried it for a year and it just didn't work. I think K C takes satisfies what we need to do.
Yes.
It's realization that it's not really connection, you know?
All right, so.
Would be a no on that.
So I look for a motion, um, well, so.
Yeah, just.
We just give it back to you.
Yeah.
That we all agree to know.
Perfect. Okay. Um, Kansas Association of Counties, um, twenty twenty-four K A C annual membership dues of four thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And they announced earlier that the dues went up a different amount, but they didn't say what they went from and to. So what was the last year? Do you know roughly?
I do not have that in front of me. I don't know if you have it.
Not, not critical. I just thought it was an increase.
I was looking at this two percent increase.
I didn't see a percent. It's a dollar amount. It's kind of funny how they presented.
Yeah, the letter says it's a two percent increase over fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
So.
It's good enough.
Um, all right, I look for a motion to approve purchase order as presented from the Axon County Clerk, uh, to Kansas Association of Counties in the amount of four thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Someone say.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. It looked like four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents.
The next, the next one I have is National Association of Counties, um, twenty twenty-four membership dues of four fifty, and I think that's been pretty remaining the same.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from Axon County Clerk to National Association of Counties in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Salute. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I remember at K C they said, I think it was, uh, hundred and twenty-two counties they belong to K C. And then like eighty counties belong to N A C O. So pretty good penetration.
The last purchase order I have here is we did do the season's greetings, um, last year in the Globe. Um, Jim Irvin contacted me again in regards to doing that. Um, the total cost is one seventy-one, and I did make some changes if you're interested in doing that. Um, it is one that they have the perforated lines around so people can cut it out. It will be, um, the addition right before Christmas.
Does it have the phone numbers for each office?
Right, I look for a motion to approve a purchase order as presented from Axon County Clerk to Cherry Road Media Incorporated for a hundred and seventy-one dollars for the twenty twenty-four seasons greetings for Axon County.
Salute.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll see this.
And the last thing I had is, um, the Memorial Hall, um, trustees, um, come do, um, come, come up for renewal every, um, January. Um, we have our organizational meeting. We'll have that on the eighth of January, which is a Monday, um, the second Monday of the month. Um, so, um, I would like to go ahead and get that posted so I can try to get letters of interest back and have the deadline be that Friday beforehand so that we can have you guys go through what we get before then. It'll give them a couple, three weeks or so.
Remind me, are those tiered or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Larry Service is coming off this year and then next year will be Travis.
Okay.
And then.
Master was last year.
Yes.
Yeah.
When you say this year, so in January, you're the Larry Service.
Um, January is where he expires, so you would have to renew him for the next. For their three-year terms.
Okay.
Yes. Uh-huh, yes. I'll let you have it. So I'll go ahead and get that put on the, um, county website then.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Is there a requirement with this one to be a veteran?
I think they all, they all have, um.
Okay.
Yes, recommendations to have that.
Okay.
Um.
Combat veterans.
Right. Some sort of service.
Two to three, so.
That I didn't, I don't know for sure exactly, but, but I know that what we have in there.
Yeah.
They all have a good interest.
Mr. Henderson on.
Yeah, th- there's a requirement that, uh, two of the three trustees, be, be veterans who saw service during time of war.
Ah, okay.
And so it isn't, uh, a- and I believe we have one who did not. So, uh, so this person would have to be a person who was in the service during a time of war.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
I'll get that in then.
And that's A S A seventy-three dash four oh seven.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, so our finance directors, twenty twenty-three budget amendment hearing.
And I think that we should wait till ten thirty since that was the time specified for the hearing. For like to get a chance for the pop.
See, at ten forty, there's an executive session. Who lived up? Who would have ever said?
I don't know. Not possible. I believe it's Lindsey with the.
It's one.
Nice Lindsey Wood. A S P. Lindsey has it.
Oh.
Um, so non-elected?
I have no idea.
Okay. And I get that information once. Yeah.
Getting anticipating. Getting things ready.
Ask question yesterday to try that. I didn't get that information today.
Observation, I seen this morning when I went by the, uh, landfill at Effing Hand, the gates were wide open. So I don't know whether someone was, and I didn't see anybody around. I know a patrol was probably went by, maybe a spark or a light, but I don't know. Maybe there was somebody back in there, but I know that that's a no-no for them if they get caught with the gates open. So.
For me.
No. Well, but they get a tag.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I just, I just, it's an observation and.
I will know. Make your own call. Thank you, Ray. But.
You're laughing at the box. You know, one laugh and an urgent expression. Kind of open.
Most of my inner homer. Hundred percent.
Thanks, I got two boxes of chocolates. I got, let's see what I got. I would move the condition, re-gives those to the staff in courthouse.
We might have to send.
I couldn't go watch that yesterday. Did you guys go?
I was there.
For you. I asked him to send a video because I couldn't see. Yeah.
Okay, I can get it out there.
Wow, it just literally bunches it down.
I've seen the ones that are on.
Yeah. It's pretty cool.
Our guys, we're sort of just learning it, but it goes, I, I think when they get proficient at it, you know, it's just like go twice as fast. Oh, yeah, it's just like. It's a, yeah, a track hoe with a grinder at the end of it where they can go and there's trees, they can just grind them down as grinds.
They've been, I've noticed something along the Sherman line that they've been doing.
Okay, I, I've heard that there's been some activity. Now, this is the first, I think the county has actually done this. This is a demonstrator here, but I think some townships, I think there's also been some power lines that have been going underneath.
Yeah, uh, what, free state. I think they cleared a path for free state along Walla Creek or.
And then. And I know Benton Township is, uh, just had a regular track hoe and they've been, uh, digging brush out along the roads. Track hoe, this, it's not a.
It's kind of a brush hog for trees, really.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, just, it's amazing. Those things are great.
Yeah.
I can see places too where they have like a plum brush thicket and they can just go, just, just mow it. You know, it's kind of like.
Side by side too, not just. You can.
Well, I mean, they, they'll rotate their whole bucket, kind of do that to for their whole body, but.
Yeah, I just, that's cool. I've never.
Work, I mean, also busting up enough that it.
First scenario has become a big problem.
Right. I must work with them here.
I bet you had a knife.
I know, but it. Joe does. Good night.
Swami.
Security knife. Through a couple.
I normally.
Quit doing it. Yeah, you had to get first dibs.
Well. My brothers. Sorry.
But with all respect. And not let me in. It's got a map too. And send them, you really can figure out they want. They got a, we got a chart.
Thanks, roadmap.
Here's a map.
I'll take this one like a surprise.
Hello, this one. You guys.
Oh, no.
It's all yours.
I don't need any of it, but.
Oh, wow.
Apparently I returned it down.
Oh, wow. That's a party foul there. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Oh, darn. It did stick. See, it is even, there's the others. Mark, would you like one?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Will Power, keep it that way.
It's got a talk and then it'll be like chocolate mouth and. Yeah.
Sorry, since there's a minute, I'll just share with you guys. Um, I got a phone call from, uh, one of my, uh, A constituents, um, that was watching the Clay County, Missouri Commission meeting, and they passed a resolution freezing property taxes for seniors. And so she called me to see if that's something we can do here at a county level. Um, I went on and read about it. And it was something that a bill had passed in Missouri. So that's how. So I reached out to Dr. Uplie, um, just to ask if this was something Kansas is looking at. And he said, yes, it's definitely been a hot topic in Kansas, and he believes it'll be again in this upcoming session. Um, he's foreseeing maybe something will get passed, um, in the next session, uh, for the state. But, uh, right now we can't do anything because that was in Missouri for Clay County, but so I'm going to call. So I'm gonna call her back and let her know that, but I just thought I'd share with you guys if anybody asks you. You know. Because sometimes people see something in another county and why can't you do that? Well. Came down from the state level, so.
That would in essence be putting. More taxes on younger people. Either that or you're gonna have to.
That comes somewhere, that's, that's, that's age-old battle.
But anyway, I just thought I'd share that because.
Side stories, entertainment, you have a great kind of mission over the last uh six or seven years, it's been very entertaining.
Oh, really?
They have a good commission. Yeah, my sister.
Hey, ten thirty.
Okay, well, good morning, and thank you for waiting till ten thirty for our. In twenty twenty-three budget amendment hearing. So there are four funds. Um, just uh give a, a brief review, so there's four funds that we are gonna amend today for your approval. Special Highway. Municipalities fights addiction fund. Solid waste and Senior Village. Um, the reason for these amendments is it estimated that the expenditures will exceed what we have set for them. Um, each of these funds do not have ad valorem dollars. Um, attached to them, they are funded with. Um, money from the state or um. In case of solid waste, it's um sales tax and Senior Village is patient or resident revenue. Um, but. I don't know if you want me to go over. What, what the budget was and what we're amending it to, or if we just. Okay, so for special highway. For twenty-three, what was adopted was four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we are amending it to one million dollars. Municipalities fights addiction was zero dollars in twenty-three. And we are amending it to thirty-one thousand dollars. Solid waste, it was one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And we are amending it to two million dollars even. Senior Village. The twenty-three budget was three million, five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. And they're increasing it by a million to four million, five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Ask questions? Okay, so on the special highway. Four forty to one million.
Yes. So each year we get, um, each county in Kansas gets an estimate of how much the state is gonna give per county. Um, the estimate from state of Kansas to Atchison County was four hundred and forty thousand. So between Joe and myself, we only set the budget at four hundred and forty thousand, that, that. We would not go over that, however, there was some roads that had good conditions that we were able to improve in twenty-three. So because he had extra funds in special highway, the cash balance was over four hundred and forty. He spent, or will spend over four hundred and forty thousand. Up to a million, so we're just increasing it to a million to allow him to spend.
So the funds are there. We just need the budget.
Budget authority to spend it.
That's a great, thank you.
And it's the same for the municipalities fights addiction. We got the opioid, opioid settlement funds, but um after going to the budget hearing. Meeting in, in Topeka this year, we learned that. You're not able to spend those funds unless you budget for it, and when we set the twenty-three budget, we didn't know that. So we set it at zero. And now we, we do want to expend those funds, so we're just amending the budget to allow us to do that.
And there's more money coming on that. Maybe this month?
No, it'll be.
We'll do that later, okay?
And then solid waste?
Yeah, so solid waste, there are extra unforeseen. Expenses that came up, um Stacy had shared with me that there were um. Waste. Things that we don't typically.
Hazardous waste.
Yes, correct, um, there was things turned in that cost extra money to um. Expose of, which was not in the budget sheet in account for that, and there's also um. An extra three hundred and fifty thousand or so roughly of that solid waste. Um, building project that came over budget, so in order to account for those items. And the increase in trash price and some other, some other things, um. We had to increase it. The two million dollars.
Three hundred and fifty was money to got eight ninety-seven to help fund, right?
Correct, but it wasn't budgeted to spend, so we had to increase it to be able to spend it.
So are the projects on? On budget for? What they were bid for, or have they went over?
Um, well, I think the, the solid waste project, the building was over. Um, it's, it's over what we thought it was gonna come in at, because I think we only budgeted four hundred thousand, but it's gonna be closer to eight hundred thousand.
The project approved and now they're on it, well, I'm just saying, is it coming in?
Oh, yes, yes. There's only been one change order for, I think, six thousand dollars, but that was for a, um, a foundation issue that they didn't know at the time when they bid it. There was a piece that. I think was cracked too much and they had to repair it, so it, the materials were six thousand extra, so. But yes. Um, and then Senior Village, if it's all right to move on from solid waste. Um, Senior Village just has extra. Um, expenditures with agency costs, um, and nursing that. It's just going to be over budget by the end of the year, so. I don't. Um. Know a hundred percent if they'll come close to that million, um, but. I increased it by a million just to be safe to allow us to spend up to that.
Sorry, I'm just looking up the spill, because we approved that I. Um, didn't feel like it was that much, because the solid waste is six hundred and thirty-four thousand difference. And the building was only gonna be. Three hundred and some.
There was um. I know higher trash costs, I don't know what that is exactly.
We had that chemical cleanup.
Yep, that's what I'm looking at. Is it seventeen? I'm trying to, sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up.
Was it the battery?
And there was also a piece of metal that, um.
And not to say that you're going to spend this. This just gives authority to run them through based on what's been.
Yes, thank you. The Clean Harbors, the um cleanup spill, the chemical cleanup was seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents. That's what I thought of, but it was without that.
So that's why I'm just trying to understand.
The other thing was what? The battery was.
Well, the, the extra cost of the hazmat material was disposal. It was, you know, batteries, it was mercury. Something else.
There was something else.
For disposal of magnesium, brick, lithium battery and mercury? Gotcha, and the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
When you got a magnesium.
That person didn't want it, that's why they were disposing them. Did you need any other cost for him? Do you have the total uh bid? I'm, I'm looking up. What it was, seven.
Yeah, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand.
So three ninety-two, okay.
And then we wrote six thousand dollar change orders, so seven ninety-eight.
See a little bit of a buffer there.
Yeah, because I wasn't completely for sure what other, when this was made. Um, in November, I wasn't completely sure if there'd be other large expenses between now and then.
The increasing cost of trash.
Yes, um.
And then we also have the nine ninety-seven and uncertainties of their house coming in, so I think, I think you're saying.
The. Corner construction, the one that's. Doing the work on the solid waste building, said that we should put in a. Um, fifty thousand dollar. Um, buffer to. Budget in case the expenses run over what they estimated, so that's also factored into there too.
Okay, okay.
Right.
But we're not anticipating that.
No, 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 they are planning it to be right on schedule, but. Um, I think Stacy, last time I talked to her, said. That the work was looking good and they were kind of on the tail end of wrapping it up, so. There was just one more payment left, um. Until it was complete, you know. So, um, with that, I guess you just open the, the hearing and. Close the hearing, there's not anything from the public, and then this page here, we would just sign up to adopt it.
Right, I will open the twenty twenty-three budget amendment hearing. For anyone that has questions or would like to comment. Are you seeing none? Um, I will close the hearing. I will look for a motion to adopt the amended certificate for calendar year twenty twenty-three. Uh, based on the presentation of our finance director.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's the move in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will get those updated and published to the state and the county website.
That should wrap up the year pretty good.
So. Non-elected or? Or uh attorney-client? You want HR? Yeah, and what, and Mark?
I don't think he is.
Okay, so non-elected personnel. Um, Senior Village admin, HR, finance and commission, thirty minutes.
I would like the attorney in your team, so.
Okay.
So three commissioners, HR, finance.
County council and admin, yeah.
We moved the commissioners, there's an executive session. At. Ten forty-two. Paying to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one, and the purpose of the closed session. Is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of the executive session and.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty? Thirty minutes. Uh, in the commission room in the Ford House basement, and those present will be three commerce commissioners, HR. Finance director, uh. County counselor and admin of Senior Village. Second.
Okay, it's the move in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um. Mark Seltner, Finance Director, Jordan Moore, HR Director, Workers Compensation Discussion.
Um, yeah, so, um, I added this to the agenda, I do to, last week we had conversations with. Um, a representative each from Carrot and K-Work. Um, and just kind of wanted to. Uh, have the discussion about where we were thinking, um. Because depending on your decision will, will result in um. Additional action on other parts, so um. And it begins, both policies began on one, one of twenty-four. And you know, we don't have much time left, so. Just wanted to see, kind of open the, open the dialogue after I guess have that. Talks.
Um, so based on the information that you've sent to us with the numbers of um, the difference. Um, I would be in favor of going with the lower, I mean. This morning alone, we have three different ways that we need to pay for twenty-five thousand dollars, and if the savings is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. Um. I don't think we're doing our, like, I don't think we're doing our. Job if we. Choose someone higher than that just because we like them, um. And also, sorry, in regards to that, um, I did ask about the safety committee balance in the fund. And there were seventy-four thousand, four twenty-one ninety-five in that, um. So. That's where I'm at, I just, we crunched so much in that budget session that I don't think. I don't feel right not making.
So what if we take the dividend that we receive back and apply it to the premium? And the commission still would budget for. The other pieces. Because if, if you do that, um.
Well, what, what's the, the dividend typically run?
Yeah, because we see five to six years is eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah, it, it fluctuates.
Right, it's sixteen and twenty. Okay, yeah. And the difference between the two. Proposals was more than that.
Yeah, twenty-seven. Well, that's removing secret.
So where, where I'm at on it, is I agree with Casey going with the lower premium. With one caveat that we actually put into our budget starting next year, a set amount for the safety committee and employee committee stuff, so. If that's ten thousand, fifteen thousand, so we have a reserve to work from for a while. So, so I mean, I think still be under twenty-seven difference and still provide what you guys need to do your jobs. With the employees, so.
I understand everything that you say, I think it's just, since we've been with the company since nineteen eighty-eight, it's difficult. To, to make sure that, um. The right decision is made, but with listening to both proposals, they are. In my best knowledge. Pretty equal in programs and, um. We can still have the safety committee with both. Were able to have. Everything that we have now on with the other.
Mark, I know at one time, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you were. Having to send the carrot information and you said, I've sent. Repeatedly. Uh, trying to get acknowledgement or something, and you, you said at the time that I'm, I'm not in. Yeah, I. I'm not enthused with their, the way they respond to.
And, and that still stands, I'm not, I don't. Really professionally enjoy. The other. Because of, I think, lack of communication. And in addition to that gentleman that we've been working with didn't come to us. If I've been working with them, Jody's been working with them. That gentleman was the one that reached out to all of us and didn't show up here to present to us. I mean, I, it, from what I understand, we'll be working with the gentleman that came, so maybe that was the direction of why they sent that guy. Um, Brandon was his name. That may be true. And just also didn't.
Um, and I respect the fact you build relationships and you get. Working relationships going, but. Yeah, I, I. I had a chance to pay with a little bit of, hey, you see me, to the guy that was here.
Yeah.
Honestly feel we're a better fit. With them, I think in the other way, maybe I'm not right, that he may be the little guy in a big crowd, I mean, I think. They're, they're bigger players in general, I think, and so we're kind of. I don't know if we're really focused on as well. I gotta say we fit the profile better on the other group.
Which is which?
K-Works.
You're better with K-Works?
Well, with your work, and I'm getting it backwards. Yeah, it was your second. Let's see the backwards.
Yeah, we all get carried right. Yeah, we all get carried, right?
Yes, okay, yeah, yeah.
I think it would be a disservice if I didn't speak up on behalf of employees, um. The premium that we received back from carrot is given back to a lot of the programs and safety. Day, um, employee appreciation, uh, county Christmas party. And at this point, those are not taxpayer dollars. So when we as a committee are making those decisions on having a Christmas party. With nice gifts, because we have saved over the last three years or had. No huge claims within worksman, workman's comp and had a safe workplace. And we got that premium back, we're able to do that without it being taxpayer dollars, so with this change to. It works, we would be at the mercy of each commission every year of budget time to. Budget taxpayer dollars to give back to the employee programs.
I think there's also, there's skin in the game with the, uh, people that are involved with the safety that. It's, it's coming back. To them, I mean, their savings, they're induced about, uh, enforcing, doing the, the work.
Yeah. So my thing was when we looked at Christmas party expenses in twenty-two, fifty-three hundred dollars for the facility plus five hundred dollars of gifts. Um, same with twenty-one, roughly five to six thousand, with the, with the money we already have in that safety committee fund of seventy-four thousand four twenty-one. That is almost thirteen years that you can. Think forward of appreciation and for the items that need corrected, that's a maintenance issue and. As of last week, I thought we had a big maintenance carryover for twenty twenty-three. So that's, but I mean, when you make improvements to the facility based on what you're flagged on safety, that to me is maintenance, like we need to. Have that figured there, if that makes sense, and, and, and continue to utilize that fund for your safety committee, are you planning the parties? As historically. I just can't sit here and talk to the taxpayers when we interviewed two companies that showed us the formulas. That everybody is basing the same thing and the rates are twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars difference, there's.
And there was a mistake on their. They didn't even get that right.
No, that's the one. Yeah, he had it right when he.
No, the, the one, you're the one that caught the, the, the rate was off and then they had to resend what the.
He didn't have the current.
Correct.
Which is just established, I think that's why, but I don't know. Workman's comp is workman's comp, I mean, but I have my business.
Yeah, but he didn't.
I quit about every three or four years just because. They creep you up and, and what you're doing is getting your money, we're really getting overcharged, get some money back and. I don't know, I mean, I think as long as you have it in the budget, so there's a certain amount of money every year. Sort of, we can try to. Put that in support of a resolution or memorialize it somehow where it's a. Make it kind of standard, I don't know, it's still harder to change, I'm not sure what the process on that is.
I think this total for the premiums for twenty-four. Um, is lower than what we budgeted for twenty-four. So that will need to be another conversation, what to do with those funds.
Doesn't feel like those are the conversations these days. Um, so what is the difference?
I don't.
Okay, we can talk on that, so. So do you need a motion? To? Okay. Alright, so. Based on total premium?
Total premium, yes, so.
Okay.
The one thirty-two for K work and the one eighty-seven. For Barrett.
Okay, so one forty-two, five eighty-nine. Okay. Alright, I would look for a motion to approve K work for the twenty twenty-four. Workers' compensation in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollar premium. Have a second? I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor for the aye? Aye. All does it oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes two to one. Thank you. No Snyder, Rodenbridge Superintendent Fall Patching Partial Payment Approved.
Morning. As you guys know. They started the ball patching and they'll start, supposed to start back like the first of, uh. March, if the weather permits. The roads, uh, have eroded quite a bit since harvest, so we're, uh. Over half. Of what we had earmarked for this. Uh, they've done a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars worth of work. The original was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Uh, I believe I will have the money left over to, to take care of the rest of that for next year. And they're wanting partial payment, which I would agree with, there is. A signature need to be, but the P O is for the full amount of what the. The, uh, fall patching was, but they're only asking a hundred and twenty-seven instead of a whole hundred and fifty-seven. So if I can get that approved.
So that, I'm okay with that, so what happens, so this winter, they'll say we have. Next break comes around, it's more damage than.
Then I have to, we have to decide what. But as long as they're here, they're willing to do more work.
Good.
You know, and, and at that point, I will have to go back out.
Right.
And because there's gonna be some, there, there is gonna be some. And, uh, look at where we're at and possibly if we have a little extra in. Uh, special highway, like we just did the amendment here, if we need that, then that would be something where we could. Take some more money possibly to help pay for that.
So partial payment is one twenty-seven nine for the one fifty-seven?
The one twenty-seven nine is the partial thing.
Okay. And that's what you want to prove today?
Yes, but the P O is for the full.
Okay. Alright, so I, I would look for a motion to approve a purchase order from Rodenbridge to P C Cs. Um, in the full amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Knowing that, uh, should we change this? Do you want this, the full amount or just the partial thing? Because it's, it's kind of wonky that I'm asking for.
The full amount should be down. Here.
Okay, so just, can I write in here?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Sorry, guys, I just want it to be.
We're asking for the partial pack, right, but we don't have a purchase order for the full, and we should have taken that out of there, so.
That's fine, I just. Partial payment authorized.
No, I didn't buy that.
Yeah.
And if you look at that sheet, it'll say percent of contract complete fifty-three point four-one percent, so. And if you look up above on totals at the rate that we went over. It would be two hundred and thirty-nine thousand if we stay at that same.
Okay. Okay, sorry. So I'd look for a motion to approve a purchase order for Rodenbridge to P C C for a partial payment authorized today, twelve, twelve, twenty-three. For one hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
So move, say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
And then I have a contract with, uh, K dot. For.
Will you initial up by where I wrote in there, sorry?
Or Noxious Weed Spring for next year and, uh. You want, Ben has updated the, uh, labor cost at thirty dollars and fifty-one cents and the. Truck cost at fifty-two dollars, fifty-two eighty-two per hour. And then it would be the same for the, uh, Gator when we're running two. And I need a signature. Right there.
This is the.
The K dot. We, we have a contract, yes, for spraying on the K dot, on that, their highways.
Okay, so I'd look for authorization, I'll let the. Chair sign, um, the Atchison County weed. Noxious weed, weed spraying contract, uh, with K dot. As presented from our Rodenbridge Superintendent.
So.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Then I have an agreement. For engineering services for having Peppercorn be our, uh, on-call engineer. And, uh, his rates, he has exactly what his rates are per hour. And this would be a contract for a year. So when we have a, uh, if we have a question or something I need help with, I would call him. Uh, all counties are supposed to have, uh, an engineer, this way we can use him as being our engineer. And that way, if, if I have a question on hydraulic study or anything like that. Uh, I can have him and we know what those costs are gonna be upfront. So I didn't know if you guys are, are willing to.
How does this work, is it a minimum, like you call in and talk for ten minutes at a minimum charge or?
Well, I take it's, it's per hour, uh, I can actually have him come to a meeting and talk to you guys if you would like, if you would like that.
I would just verify that, so.
Okay.
I mean, you might be worth saving your questions up and saying, I'm gonna take your time now.
Right, no, I understand.
Yeah, because it's.
Usually they, usually they total, uh, they total everything up.
Okay.
That's what, that's what's been done in the, in the past. And I'm sorry, some of this didn't get here before Thursday, so I didn't get to, get to put it on the agenda.
I ran through this if I got it, but I didn't, couldn't see anything, I was just a flat hour rates and. There's no. That I could see.
If you have some questions you'd like for me to get answered and we can do this next week, we can do that or.
This, I was probably wrong, it's, it's under the rate, the address rate, so. If he's happy, that's fine.
Okay, I would for a motion to approve Peppercorn Engineering and Environmental LLC for the twenty twenty-four on-call engineer. Um, based on the service agreement provided by our Rodenbridge Superintendent.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
This is verification. Oh, well, that's all I'm asking. He's been fair to us, I think.
Okay, so now I have, who are you guys, I was gone last week and we opened the fuel bins. And, uh, when I got to, I will tell you, I called Jackson Farmers and I asked him why up in him. Uh, part of Jackson Farmers hasn't been bid the last two years. And the response I got is the guy got busy and forgot this year. So, because I was concerned, I was concerned why they're not. Why they're not bidding the field or, you know, basically within the county. And that's the, that's the answer, I called Holt to find out. And, uh, that's what I was told, so I am trying to get more people involved in these, in these bids, but, uh. Consumer, uh, on the clear diesel is three seventeen fifty per gallon. Uh, ag partners is three twenty-five, the winter blend charge, consumer is still less than. That, the, uh, die diesel is the same, consumer is, is, uh. Two ninety-one and. The other one's two ninety-nine. I think we go with consumer, I mean, that's would be my recommendation, uh, I do, I did do this this summer. Uh, I had someone from Ag Partners come and they were trying to sell their product. And we pulled samples out of our tank on what the fuel was from consumer. And it matched everything that Ag Partners was, uh, trying to sell theirs on. So there wasn't any, we didn't have any water, the seat taint and everything was right where it was supposed to be. So I just wanted to give you that, that information.
Okay. Right, so I would look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four fuel bid. Uh, as presented from Rodenbridge Superintendent, uh, the award consumer oil, uh, with our twenty twenty-four fuel purchases.
So move, second.
Please, I'm moving to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Then do you have the, uh. Beds for the interest on the dump truck. The bit for the bit opening.
Yeah, I didn't know there was a bit opening today. It's, it's not on the edge of it. And I did actually get one in my email this morning at nine AM, so it's right here. It's up to you, um, to see if. I, I don't know, I didn't have any of the information, sorry, Pat. He's coming on.
I, I think there were two that were received, or at least there were two that I was copied on, um. One of them was received last week and the other one was received this morning. The, uh, the R F P has a typo in it. Um, as obviously I used a prior one and it put the, the deadline back in May for receiving them. Uh, so that was just a mistake, it's ordinarily by five PM the day before the bids are opened. And that's what was intended, but that's not what it said in the, uh, the R F P that was sent out.
Yeah, and these both were date stamped as yesterday, they came into the office, but later I said I had an email. That said that their CFO was out of the office on Friday and Monday, so yesterday. And was waiting for that, um, okay from them to get that in, but I do believe my emails said something about. I think you got it too, Pat, right?
Yes.
Okay, I was thinking you got that email too, but I think I would be doing a disservice if I didn't say that we did have a late one.
I would guess we have to take it then if our deadlines.
I don't know, I'm just saying, yeah, okay.
And this is, uh.
I don't expect some of that again.
For our T eight eighty.
For the twenty twenty-four can one.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four can one. We ordered it a year ago and it's, it's in right now. So this is, uh, it's set up with snowplow, hopper, everything. This is from First Option Bank in Troy. At the interest rate of four point nine one percent. Uh, the amount was two hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars over seven years with a semi-annual payment of. Twenty thousand six hundred and one dollars twenty-two cents. Second one is from G M B Bank. In Horton, Kansas, and it is, uh, five point three seven percent. Semi-annual payment is twenty-one, two nineteen.
That one's it, and final.
This one is from Exchange National Bank. Interest rate of five point five five percent. Semi-annual payment of twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents. And just so everyone listening knows, uh. We have been buying extended warnings on these. Pieces of equipment that last up to seven years, so the warranty would. Pieces of equipment that last up to seven years, so the warranty would last through the. The payment of the life of the the life of the loan.
You wanna make a recommendation today?
Well, I think we would go with the, I can't remember. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And so everyone knows the truck is sitting in Wichita, we're ready to go. So.
I've seen the truck.
Yeah.
Okay, look for a motion to approve um First Option Bank. Um for our lease purchase um for equipment financing of our twenty twenty-four Kenworth T eight eighty S snow and ice dump truck. Um with the interest rate of four point nine one percent, semi-annual payments twenty thousand six oh one twenty-two as presented by a road bridge.
So move. Second.
Is the movement seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
You're a good read on that.
Yeah. And uh. Like I said, as soon as we can get the check from them and everything, then we can get our truck. And they'll come up and uh have someone show everybody.
Do they deliver?
Yes, they will haul it. They will haul it. They'll bring it up and they'll have someone here to go over the truck and explain everything to the. Uh, our employees of how everything works. So, but this is, this is a really a nice truck, built away.
I'm ready, I'm ready to go. And maybe speak with the the service department too, you know, without anything special.
Yep.
Needs fuel, filters, whatever.
So, uh. The rest of mine, if we're gonna go into a workshop here after a bit, I think probably. Because I have quite a bit. Uh, if you guys are good with that. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, alright, so it's eleven forty, um EMS Director Corey Scott had sent us a quote. Is he on here? Oh, he's on here, good, okay, sorry, I forgot to look up at Zoom, I was.
No, I I normally wouldn't, I've got a little under the weather and I don't wanna spread anything, so I'm gonna virtual presence today.
Welcome, Corey, you're up for the Kansas Revolving and Assistance Fund Grant.
Uh, commonly known the craft grant, um seeking permission from the commission today to go ahead with applying for that grant. For the purchase of another Furno power. As you know that we've completely converted from the striker system to the Furno system. Which means if we have an ambulance uh cot go down, it means the whole ambulance goes down at this point, because I apologize. I don't have a spare cot, so. Spare cot and plus the one we purchased in twenty seventeen is fairly aged at this point. Purchase one anyway. So the craft grant for the purposes of purchasing a cot. Uh, needs a twenty-five percent local match, so uh did all three commissioners receive my quote from Furno? So forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents, so approximately twenty-five percent local match is gonna be ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, there should be enough in the ambulance fund, the one-two-nine fund to cover the local match. I'm gonna be asking for the state portion at thirty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents. The deadline to have the grant in is January first. So, just seeking permission to go ahead and with that process.
Okay, look for a motion to allow uh Corey Scott EMS Director to move forward with applying for the Kansas Revolving and Assistance Fund Grant.
So move.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pass three to zero. Thanks, Corey, for identifying these grant opportunities and.
Not a problem.
We appreciate.
Couple more that hopefully we can apply through four through twenty twenty-four, but I'm still very preliminary on those, so.
Awesome.
Really great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good day.
Yeah, feel better.
It's fine.
Okay, unfinished business? Have anything? Tony Counselor Updates.
Uh, I don't have anything special today.
And I was just asked by constituent end of last week, we're still on for February as the shooting date for the tax sale, correct?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Um, alright. Executive session again at one o'clock, um but nothing really till then, so. Do we want to um adjourn into workshop until one? I'm sorry, recess into workshop until one?
Primary Road Bridge.
Yeah, and finance director.
Finance, yeah, sure.
Okay, look for a motion to recess into uh workshop until one.
So move, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Me too. Alright, we are back in open session and we are going to um go into executive session, how long? We need, that how long would we need?
Yeah, I I would say half an hour would be enough.
Okay. Thirty minutes.
I would move that board of county commissioners recess into executive session. At one PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session in one half hour. And the commissioner in the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, uh. H R, finance, and uh. Administrator, I'm having a. Administrator or senior village, I was trying to think of senior village and it's just like it dropped out of my brain, sorry.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to.
Sorry. I think you second, you you agree with that, that.
I think that should be between the department head and them. We wouldn't do that anywhere else.
I agree.
Okay.
Ten more minutes?
Sure.
Ten more minutes?
Oh. I I didn't hear what you said. I'll I'll move that the uh organic commissioners extend our executive session for ten more minutes. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, uh say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, we're back in open session, do we have any other need for any other executive sessions?
Think so.
Okay, uh do I have a motion to approve the expenses we reviewed this week?
Some more, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Any public comment?
Thank you.
I don't, this isn't a public comment, but uh with regard to that lease purchase, there's one thing I forgot. Uh, that is that we need to designate a person to sign on behalf of the county and that should be Joe Snyder. Uh, with this. That that delayed things for us a little bit last time, so if we just make sure we include in the minutes that. Joe Snyder is authorized to sign all documents on behalf of the county, that would uh speed things up a little bit, I know they're in a hurry.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, and you'll need to vote on it to make sure that it's in the minutes.
Okay, perfect, I would look for a motion to approve Joe Snyder Roden Bridge Superintendent to sign all lease purchase documents. Um, as a.
Just this one.
Right, the for the T eight eighty Kenworth.
So move, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Alright, so public comment. Seeing none, uh, have a look forward um. To adjourn into a workshop until two forty-five? Are you adjourning or recessing?
We need to have a move for the meeting.
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, thank you for that reminder. Um, I would look for a motion to amend the Atchison County policy. To protect all employees at Senior Village's P T O during negotiations with the N sign group. Do I have a motion to approve that amendment?
So. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero, thank you for that reminder, Commissioner Reavis. Um, and we will look for a motion to adjourn into a workshop until two forty.
You wanna time on that or just?
Or when we're done.
That's what I'm saying, are you, are you adjourning, are you adjourning or recessing?
We're adjourning.
We're true.
So then just adjourn. Well, but.
Right, Pat?
We're adjourning in the workshop.
I think, I think it's a matter of semantics, you're not adjourn, you're not ending the meeting, you're continuing the meeting, so you're recessing.
Okay.
And then we come back.
With no business.
Yeah. Okay, so.
And you don't have to wait till the till. Till then, if you uh if you all leave. That ends the meeting if there's no longer a quorum.
Okay, so we will recess and do workshop. Have a motion to recess and no workshop.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.